Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. This is a special meeting, the Board of Education, and so we will jump right in. Do we have any, anyone here?
Establish a quorum.
Sorry?
Can we establish a quorum?
We need to establish a quorum, so I will have our council, Mr. Riel, take a role.
Thank you. A member Lopez, member Vice President Otto, President Craighead.
Here.
Member Benitez.
Here.
And member Miller.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping me honest. And do we have anyone here for public comment? No public comment?
No public comments.
So we will jump right in. I'm going to welcome Greg Klein. He's our coach for Student Outcome Focused Governance. And without any further ado, we will get down to business.
All right. Thank you all. Let me bring this a little closer, maybe. Good afternoon. Thanks for having me back. We've got a couple hours and three main topics to cover this afternoon. These topics are in the implementation timeline. I think one was in March, one was in April, and one's in May, but this was the right time to try and tackle all of them. Ironically, one of them is about time use, and that's the one I'm saving for last. So if we don't get to it, I'll just ask for a board member to huddle with me, maybe in between the meetings. But the first topic is distinguishing amongst inputs, outputs, and outcomes. And the reason why that was on the implementation timeline, and the reason why we're talking about it right now, is because in December, when the board did its last quarterly self-evaluation, the board noticed that it decided it couldn't necessarily distinguish amongst them consistently. And the board wanted a refresher training on that topic and why it's important. So that's, we went from that December self-evaluation to the timeline to today. That was how we got to that topic. So we're going to talk about that topic. I want to take you through, I'm going to go a few steps deeper than that because that will tee us into the second topic, which is the idea of board work versus superintendent work, which dovetails with ownership service versus customer service. And then finally, as I said, we'll tackle time use. Okay? Any questions before we get going? All right, staff, definitely hop in here, participate as much as you'd like. And no one has to have the answers, you know, already. And yes, look at your, I see you've got your blue manuals, the bold words, the glossary will, might be helpful with some of these questions. So if I'm hungry, what's the outcome that I want?
Full belly.
Full, I heard full belly. I heard food. You might all want to just turn on your microphones. I don't know if that creates feedback, but you know, be ready to just hop in. What's the outcome I want if I feel hungry? To not be hungry, to feel full, satiated. Yeah. Why is having food or having money not the outcome that I want?
That's just an ends to a mean.
Ends to a mean, what?
It's an input?
Yeah, those are inputs. Those are, those are strategies I might use to get to the outcome that I want, which is to feel full. Okay? So the inputs in this scenario are having food or the money to buy food. And those inputs, I usually know at the beginning of the cycle, okay? They're, they're a measure of the effort applied to whatever I'm trying to solve for. Outcomes are knowable at the end of the cycle. And I'm using my left, I should probably say to you all, this is the end, right? Outcomes, if, is that right? Right to left? Yeah, yeah. Anyways, inputs at the beginning of the cycle, outcomes at the end of the cycle. So let's, let's pretend I'm going to use a strategy, a peanut butter and jelly sandwich strategy, to get to this outcome of feeling full. So I want to feel full. I'm going to make myself a sandwich. Real quick, what are the inputs that I need?
Bread, peanut butter, jelly.
Bread, peanut butter, jelly, anything else?
Allotted time to make a sand.
I need the time to make a sandwich. Time is an investment. Knife, plate, I've heard, you know, maybe a recipe to follow, maybe a countertop, you know, or a space to do it, and all sorts of things. I need all these inputs. And I'm going to make my sandwich, I'm going to eat my sandwich, and then hopefully I'm going to feel full. Okay. Let's go another step further. Let's say I've got a hungry class of third graders, and I want to use the peanut butter and jelly sandwich strategy with my hungry class of third graders, right? The outcome that I want is for my third graders to feel full. I'm going to need a lot of knives and a lot of bread and a lot of jelly and peanut butter and nut-free butter and all the butters so that, right, everyone is included. But I don't want to wait to know if they feel full because it's too late, okay? I want to know in the middle of the cycle, am I on track to helping my third graders feel full, okay? What are some ways I might understand in the middle of the cycle if I, if they're on track to be feeling full? How might I know that in the middle?
If you have enough bread, enough supplies for 30, 30 third graders.
Yeah, so I could certainly on the, on the input side, make sure I've invested enough, have a good plan before I even begin. Before I even begin, I better have enough bread, enough jelly, enough peanut butter, for sure. So I've checked that box. I've made the sandwiches. I don't want to wait till it's all done. What could I know in the middle?
Maybe an, yeah, an unofficial survey of how many sandwiches they normally eat. I don't know.
Sure, I could, I could ask the children.
Yeah.
Hey, you haven't finished yet. Are you, are you starting to feel full?
Yeah.
On a scale of one to 10? Yeah, yeah, scale one to 10? I could look out and just measure, you know, the percentage of the sandwiches that have been eaten across the room without asking them any questions, right? I could just look and see. But the idea of understanding data in the middle, we call those the outputs, okay? So outputs are knowable in the middle of the cycle. They're really two things. They're a measure of how well did we implement the inputs? How well did the inputs even get implemented? And also, they are, they give us information that helps us predict whether or not we're on track to accomplishing the outcome, which is what we really care about, right? We don't, we don't care that they eat a sandwich. I care that they got full. I just used the peanut butter and jelly sandwich to get, to help them there. But if they got full another way, that's the outcome I want. I just want them to feel full. All right, let's leave the sandwiches aside. Let's turn it back to schools. So in your school system, what are some examples of your inputs?
Books, classrooms, materials, supplies that are needed for learning to occur.
Yeah.
Furniture.
Staff, your, your teachers, by far, your most important inputs. I dare you to teach children how to read without teachers. Like, it's just, it's just not going to happen. Your teachers are incredibly important. So yeah, those are great examples of inputs. How about outputs in a school system? What are, what, how do schools and school systems measure in the middle, middle of cycles? Say, sorry, say.
Unit assessments.
Unit assessments. How else?
Grades.
Could be grades. I ready, like, middle of the year, yeah, benchmark exams, definitely. Sometimes, you know, people take, what's our attendance rate as of this date, you know, in the middle? That could be an output as well. And then what are some examples of outcomes? What are some things y'all aim for at the end of your cycles? Reading proficiency?
A through G compliance.
A through G completion rates and, yeah. I, we often get the graduation rates as, as one, and some people say, oh, no, that's, that's really an output. And other people say, no, it's an outcome. What would make graduation rates and, or A through G completion rates? What would make that an output instead of an outcome? Yeah, if your goal was to graduate a PhD program way earlier in the cycle, your A through G completion rate might be an output. It might be, it might give you years in advance some understanding, are you on track to getting through that PhD program way down the road, right? But if your goal is A through G completion, which is also fine, then your output would be, what might be an output to help you understand before A through G completion, if you're on track?
Maybe grades in a particular A through G class, like an algebra class, one of the math requirements for A through G would be a, something along the way that would have to get done.
Yeah.
For you to then complete all the requirements.
Yeah, something earlier in the process is the point around outputs. So we've got inputs, knowable at the beginning of the cycle, outputs, knowable in the midst of the cycle, outcomes at the end of the cycle. I want to go one step later. That's the gist, that, right there, we just finished that part in the framework. But like I said, I want to go, I want to go a little further, okay? So what's an example in your school system of an outcome that you all produce that is not a student outcome? Parent involvement? Parent involvement?
Completion of facilities projects?
Building new buildings, passing a budget, clean audit, teacher retention. There's all sorts of important outcomes that school districts produce and create that are not student outcomes, okay? But student outcomes, and according to our framework, and you'll read it in the bold words, student outcomes are those things that students know and can do. So we do distinguish between student outcomes and adult outcomes. Why is it important that board members can distinguish between inputs, outputs, and outcomes, and between student outcomes and adult outcomes? Why is it important that a board can distinguish amongst all those things?
It's the reason that boards exist.
Say more.
The, because student outcomes don't change until adult behavior changes.
We do, we do often say that, yes. We would say that school systems exist to improve student outcomes. That's the reason we all started schools, so that we could increase what students know and can do. That's the fundamental reason why school systems exist. School boards exist to represent the vision and the values of the community. Along the way of getting to those high student outcomes, districts do a lot of other things and need to accomplish a lot of other things on that journey. But they're not the reason school districts exist and school systems exist. And we are very clear, we want to support boards to align their work with the purpose of why the entity exists in the first place. So if you're not clear, if you're not clear on the difference between inputs, outputs, and outcomes, and you're not clear about the difference between student outcomes and adult outcomes, how might you spend your time?
Focused on too much what and losing track of why and the true data.
Yeah, I mean, if you look across, we, coaches, we look at a lot of board meetings, not just Long Beach. If you look across the nation's board meetings and school districts, most boards are intensely focused on adult inputs, based on how they spend their time, based at looking their agendas, based on what staff are bringing reports about. Like, that's just what most school boards and school districts spend their time on. And we feel that that is just fundamentally misaligned with the purpose of what school systems are about. So we're not saying, don't, you'll never do those things. We're just saying, make the main thing the main thing. And so we definitely, you've heard us coach around trying to spend 50% or more of your time in your board meetings monitoring your student outcomes, right? And that takes a while to build that muscle and get up, get up all the way to 50%. So are there, before we move on to any other topics, are there any other questions about the difference between inputs, outputs, outcomes? Beginning of the cycle, middle of the cycle, end of the cycle? Or adult outcomes versus student outcomes?
Greg, nothing specific in terms of a question, but maybe it's something for us to think about or keep in mind as we take a deeper dive into the work, as he said, is one of the, I wouldn't say unique, but scenarios and qualities and characteristics of the Long Beach Unified School District is that even before we began conversations about student outcomes-focused governance, by some measures, and some would argue by many measures, this district was doing very well in terms of student outcomes. Received awards, our schools, specific programs and initiatives, nationally recognized. So I think as we think about the culture of the district and move toward a more student outcomes-focused approach, it's, it's interesting to juxtapose in how was it that the district, without, you know, our last self-assessment, we scored ourselves a zero on it, without doing many of these things that by many accounts are the way that we improve student outcomes, that we were, by many measures, improving student outcomes in spite of not having many of these things in place, not, you know, devoting, you know, any time sometimes on agendas to student outcomes. So again, not for us to necessarily answer here today, but I think there is this sense of, then does that mean that we weren't doing things the way we're supposed to be doing and not to throw anyone under the bus? Or how, how do we sort of reconcile that we're taking a full dive into this work, trying to improve student outcomes, when in fact, by many measures, especially compared to other urban districts, the district was doing well, if not really well, to those things? That's, that's a question that, you know, in the last three years or so, that I've been thinking about. So, so what is the motivation then, the inspiration for taking a huge shift by, by many accounts?
Yeah.
And then our communities, really, then trying to figure out why, why change, you know, why quote unquote, give up board power? Why, you know, take a deep dive into distinguishing superintendent responsibilities, board responsibilities, if the district was doing well in all these areas before? So again, not necessarily for us to answer or address specifically here today, but that is something that I, particularly the last three years of this journey, think about, right? That for all the awards and recognitions and accolades, and then we're doing a huge shift now. And, and so that's, that's the part where I think just being thoughtful and mindful.
Yeah.
That, that not only is the culture shift important, but folks in this district have been doing things a certain way and have been recognized and honored and received awards for doing things that way.
Absolutely. And, and I would, I would bet that as we continue in this work, that the, those exemplars have a, will definitely find a home in this work where they will get to continue that, that excellent work. You all said you wanted help, you know, that's why, why we're here. And frankly, it's a testament to your commitment to serving your students, that whatever award-winning work y'all were doing for you wasn't good enough. You all made that choice to go even further and go deeper. We're not here to, to take away anything that was accomplished in the past. It's to continue building upon the foundation you laid. And this work really, and I know there's a new website that I think is available to, to the public, too, that kind of tracks how this work goes back years. So it's certainly not just in the last three months. But yeah, no, it's definitely a good point. And I also will say, you know, we're not talking about it, well, we, it may come up in the, in the board work versus superintendent work. We, I would definitely, you know, in a public meeting, there's no members of the public here, this work is absolutely the opposite of the board giving up its authority. This is, this is the board holding its authority and doing its job, and the job that only it can do as the elected representatives of the community. The superintendent cannot be and is not the elected representative of the community. Nobody elected the superintendent. And so this work is absolutely about helping board members stand in their full authority and power as a board to do their work, for sure, not to give it up. It is impossible for the board to delegate its board work to the superintendent. It cannot do it.
You know, if I, I know you, you said it's not necessarily a question that, that should be addressed today, but, but I would like to say that being a member of the board when we started this work, for me, I understood that, that I work for a district that enjoyed and earned many accolades. But for me personally, it was about, if I work harder, if I helped to adopt this new, not new, but new to Long Beach model of governance, if what we do as a board can directly affect student outcomes, then why wouldn't we want to do that? And, and not trying to, you know, minimize the the work that had been done before, the, the success that we've had before, but trying to be, trying to shift things so that the board had a more direct role in, in student outcomes. And so for, for me, it, it was about, yes, this is a very successful district, but we can always do better for our kids. And when we were each asked if we would commit to this work, I gladly committed to the work because I knew that our kids deserve the best we have. And if that means that we have to work harder or do more as board members, I was certainly willing to do that because I know that's why we all wanted to work for these kids and to do our best so they can have the best.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, Diana. And so when I, when, when I first participated in some of these trainings, that, that was sort of my wondering, right? Okay, so what's, what's the return on investment?
Mm-hmm.
All right, because this is, you know, we're, we're taking additional time here. It's a massive effort by the entire district. And so for me, it's a yes to everything that you shared. But also, the impacts of COVID in our virtual learning magnified many of those disparities and educational outcomes that by, again, many measures, we had made some progress on, you know, by 2018, 2019. So to me, the urgency then to address disparate educational outcomes, to address our most underserved students beckoned. I mean, there was a moral imperative to do right by those students that had already been historically underserved, marginalized, felt a sense of discrimination, broken trust. But that then our COVID, the impacts of COVID, and not to just single that, but everything that went along with that, our data showed that it was disproportionately impacting those groups where there were already, there was already a history of, of, not that we didn't make progress, but of those opportunity gaps, educational gaps. So to me, at that point, it, it, it became, I think, a moral imperative. And it behooved us as a system to look for, how do we support, address disparities that had for many years existed, and some would say since the beginning of our schools, but particularly those that had the most negative impact, right, during this time period? And again, I'm speaking because of the targeted SMART goals focus that we have about our students with disabilities, our emerging bilinguals, our black students, our socioeconomic disadvantaged students, our students in foster care, were disproportionately negatively impacted by, you know, that year and a half, basically. And not that that period was ever over, but, but to me, that's what really served as a catalyst. And not that we wouldn't consider and wouldn't be thoughtful about how can we be better and always under continuous improvement, but if nothing else, we have these gaps that have either stayed the same and/or in some cases have widened.
You know, I really appreciate you sharing that part of the history. And it makes sense, there's, there's plenty of school board governance models out there. Superintendent, I'm sorry, did you want to share? I was just going to say, there's plenty of governance models out there. You all have chosen the one that's, you know, created by the Council of the Great City Schools, you know, a, a membership organization of the nation's large urban school districts where the majority of, of students, you know, are from backgrounds you're describing. So absolutely, this model aligns with that intention.
I would just add, too, that anytime there is a significant leadership, leadership transition in a district, so following a veteran 18-year superintendent, for me, part of my learning in the first several months of being superintendent and actually through the transition process was just around systems. And so you all who were on the board at the time helped me to understand what systems were at play, what the board thought its goals were, and how we would reimagine at that time based on our student needs and think about the future. And so that was really important. We also were in the, in the process of having two longtime board members retire. So new superintendent, two new board members coming on board, then became three. And so that was an opportunity for us to reflect on what the systems at play were. In addition to saying, where do we know we've gotten in terms of student progress? Where do we want to go, I think, was the big question. And how will a board unify around that, along with adding a new superintendent to an extension of, of your team? So lots happening in 2020 that actually might be a time to show the website just for a moment. So activate it on something that the board asked for, and I'll ask the communications team if you can show the now live website that tells about the 2020 to 2025 milestones in the Student Outcome Focused Governance journey for the board. It's available for the public at this time, but also is, it is reflective of the way that our Vision 2035 work is reflected on the, the board website and now is expressed for Student Outcome Focused Governance. We'll give them a moment. It's just a quick show so you can see. It includes milestones that are then linked to different aspects of your work over time, starting in 2020.
Well, that's a good segue anyhow.
Let's give it a quick look. Yeah, so here you go. Team Behind the Scenes has built an interactive site that you can see starting back in the fall of 2020, the first engagement with the Council of the Great City Schools around this governance approach. And then each of the blue buttons has been designed to signal a milestone in this journey and links to presentations that were made in board meetings, links to significant policy. The Excellence and Equity Policy is linked there. And then you can see the transition in terms of the way that the agenda has been formulated as part of our transition to Student Outcome Focused Governance. You can see significant milestones such as Vision 2035 that is part of this journey, and then the alignment that happened post Vision 2035. And this was, this was an ask of you all relative to transparency and a way to narrate the journey. There, there's more to come in terms of the posting of bylaws and the implementation timeline, but this is a way that we're moving into what you asked for. Thank you, Team Behind the Scenes.
Yes, thank you. That is fabulous. Fabulous.
All right. And Team Behind the Scenes, if you want to put those goal, board goals back up, we're going to need them in a sec. So we have been talking about inputs, outputs, and outcomes, adult outcomes, and student outcomes. And I asked, you know, why is it important for the board to be able to distinguish? We talked a little about why is it important to be able to distinguish amongst them and be in alignment with the, the purpose of why we have schools. So now I want to go a little bit deeper and, and say, we don't just, we, we don't just stay at the student outcome level, right? And when I, when I look at your goals, you have student outcomes there, one, two, three, and four, in bold words, reading proficiency, reading acceleration, algebra proficiency, proficiency, college and career readiness. Those are definitely student outcomes. 100%. Those are student outcomes. Those are not student outcome goals. What's special about a goal? The bold words are not goals. That's all I'm saying. The bold words. Tell me, though, what, what makes it, what makes a goal a goal?
And yeah, Mr. Miller, I think, I think we'll let you take it because I know you're going to say smart.
Well, geez. No, I'm kidding. But I will say this, one of the things that was important, not just to me, but to the entire board when I first came on board, were having goals that were metric-driven, having goals that had very firm timelines, having goals that were smart, for lack of a better term. And so from my first day to now, I've, I just have been humbled at how that has trickled down all the way to the campus level where they think about how they approach some of these short-term and long-term goals to support our students. And so this is just a testament to a lot of the hard work that we've done over the past four years.
Definitely, definitely, yeah. What makes a goal a goal is that it's smart. And, and if you look, I'm now on page two of, if you're on your manual, under Approaching Student Outcomes Focus. And what we mean by, so smart, specific, measurable, attainable, results-focused, and time-bound. And the way we make a goal smart is with six criteria. Starting point, ending point, starting date, ending date, a specific measure, and a population. And all six of those elements we want in the goal sentences. So just quick spot checks, anybody. Goal number one, who's the population? What's the group of students? Grade three. What's the starting date? June 2023? We always look for a month and a year. What's the ending date? And what's the starting point and the ending point? And what's the starting point and the ending point? Forty-eight percent to seventy percent. And what's the measure? How are we gonna measure this? ELAS back, yeah. So that's a smart goal. And you can go through all goal two, one, two, three, and four. You have only adopted SMART goals. You have. The the bold, I and I like how you've included the student outcome, the outcome language there, and the student outcome goal. Okay, so absolutely, you've got student outcome goals. Uh, you're not shocked to hear that, uh, but I wanted to just clarify that we we, that's how we go from a student outcome, a desired student outcome, turning it into a goal means it's gotta have those six criteria. Um, alright, so the next aspect is, we've got, we remember inputs at the beginning of the cycle. You now have a student outcome goal at the at at the at the outcome you're looking for that the board adopted. But now, you don't want to wait until June twenty twenty-eight to know if you're on track to hitting your goal. That would be not a good plan. Hope is not a strategy. So you need output measures, and we call those interim goals. Okay, interim goals. Does anyone remember anything that you already know about interim goals?
Just um, ways to measure if you're on track or not. And so um, for us, um, for an example, on the uh, goal one for reading proficiency, it's taking a look at where those students are um, at the end of each school year as we approach um, twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, yeah, so there might be, how are the second graders doing and the first graders and the kindergarteners doing earlier, but so that the third graders in June twenty twenty-eight are on track? That could be a way of measuring it for sure. Interim interim goals are the main thing I that I picked up on what you said was that they they are predictive of the goal. A a good interim goal, an aligned interim goal helps you understand if you're hitting this, am I on track to hitting the outcome goal? Generally, we recommend one to three interim goals for every goal. They are also smart in the exact same way that the outcome goals are smart. So they also have a specific population of students. They might not be the exact same students, right? If you're measuring third graders in June twenty twenty-eight, some school systems might have an interim measure about first grade proficiency, cuz you want to know how are the kids doing earlier maybe. Um, and they're uh, usually not measured using the same measurement. Like, you know, you need a different assessment, not just S back. Um, so they have to be predictive. They have to be smart. And the third thing, they have to be influenceable by the superintendent. They've got to be things the superintendent basically can control and and really leverage and do. They're not thing, you don't set interim goals around things that you're dependent on the state to handle for you or the county to handle for you, or that you want to have like ownership of like, we can accomplish this uh, interim goal because we control the investments. We have, we have enough say, enough budget to deal with these interims. Okay, so the idea is, the board has set the goal. Who creates the interims?
The superintendent and staff.
Yeah, the superintendent and staff creates the interims. Okay, you as a board, you're experts in the vision and the values of the community. The goal is an is an expression of the prioritized vision of the community. Your superintendent is an educational expert and the staff, okay? You tell them where you're heading, they're gonna help you get there. AJ tells a story of the rideshare driver, right? Where, you know, what is the first thing AJ does when he when he calls for a ride to the airport? What's he put into the app? Where he's going, the destination, okay? But once he's in the car, he's not operating the gas or the steering wheel. He hasn't been out driving all day like the rideshare driver has. He doesn't know where the potholes are and that sort of stuff. He's gonna let the professional driver take him to the airport. I'm gonna come back to this anecdote in just a sec when we talk about guardrails.
Greg, is it appropriate to um, ask a question here around interim goals of of the team, or do you want us to save those?
Well, let me just say that I know there's work going on right now to bring, uh, I, you know, I don't know if it's updated or reorganized, or I don't know exactly how you would describe them, but aligned interim goals that align to each board adopted goal. Yeah, so I know that that work is ongoing. And Superintendent, do you have an update on the time? Was it, were you thinking May, or is it?
So this was more of a general question, Dr. Baker, um, around terminology. So I can, I can hold it or whatever you think.
Are you gonna ask about district goals?
Not specific.
Okay.
Not specific, more more around a differentiating between interim um goals versus our goals.
Sure, go ahead.
And again, I mean, I
Yeah, well, it's fine now.
So it's 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 really to to um, to Mr. Moskovitz, Dr. Madrigal, and the research team. So oftentimes, we will heal here uh, things like leading indicators in the context of our interim goal conversation. So um, can can we maybe, again, in general terms, talk about where do it, where do leading indicators sort of fall within our conversations around interim goals?
Go for it.
And Dr. Madrigal is behind as well, so she's welcome to come on up and if if need be. Um, I would say that, so interim goals are very specific things that we set. And for each of our board goals, we currently have interim goals that we've set that, and you know, we've done it kind of on a cohort model. Last year it was TK, this year Kinder for goal board goal one. So those are the interim goals. We also have other leading indicators that we look at throughout our system beyond even those interim goals to kind of know, are we making progress? So our schools might use a unit assessment. They might do more daily check-ins, weekly check-ins on foundational reading skills. So there are some other leading indicators we look at. I think sometimes we use them synonymously. Interim goals are the very specific things we've set aligned to the board goals. There are broader leading indicators that we also look at throughout our system to make sure that we're even on track towards our interim goals. So that that's how I would.
Yeah, and these are all relative terms. Your goals are very much lagging indicators. Your interim goals are leading indicators towards them, but they're lagging compared to your shorter-term units. So it's it's all relative, but
Predictive of their respective goals. And so that's, that might be a way for us to start to like line up the language that we use of predictive, based on your question.
Yeah, the idea, and this is really hard work to do on the staff's part. So just to be crystal clear for the board. When the board says, okay, we're gonna go to these goals, figuring out the, what are the interim metrics that in January or February or March of a year will give staff and board an understanding of, are we on track or not to that future thing? That's really, that can be very difficult work to do to figure out what are those assessments and metrics? And then it's additional hard work. There's another layer below them, maybe leading indicators. We we call them initiatives. For each one of those interim goals, there could be any number of a smart adult input initiatives that staff are organizing. And all of those, you know, when you accomplish all the in, the initiatives, the idea is that you're likely to accomplish one interim goal. And then when you accomplish all the interim goals for that goal, you're likely to accomplish that goal. And so that that layer, the the goals to interim goals to initiatives, in our lingo, we call that the strategic plan. Just to be clear, that's what we call strategic plan. But we also have another thing called a playbook, which is basically the initiatives like for another forty pages of the detailed work that staff do just to build up all the work it takes to get initiatives off the ground. So they're, they're working, that's for sure. And it and it and it takes time. Um, and the other aspect that's hard is that people have, staff really have to wrestle with, there's already existing work that goes on in a district. And we are clear that this, the work we're talking about starts with the outcome goals. And then staff figure out the interim metrics, and then figure out what are the initiatives that get to that? Only at this point do staff ask themselves, are we already doing something or not that gets at that goal? In some cases, staff may have to create entirely new initiatives, cuz nothing exists in the district that aligns with those interims. Right? It's possible when when it's, when you're getting started in this work. And that means if you need to make space for something new, then you have to go through a process of how are you going to stop doing the work you're already doing? And what does that process look like? And so we definitely have coaching and support around that aspect for staff. That's definitely superintendent work. Uh, but that that is work that goes on in the background for sure. So we've got these interim goals, three, three qualities, predictive of the goals, smart, and influenceable by the superintendent. Okay, so all of this work we've been discussing so far, going back to your comment, Diana, uh, is is representative of the board's role in representing the community's vision. Okay, what they want to be true for their students, what they want their students to know and be able to do, the community's vision. The board listened for it, they heard it, they prioritized it in the fewer student outcome goals. But the board's job is more than that. The board's job is also to represent the community's values. Okay, and so in the framework, we operationalize that using the guardrails. And every guardrail is designed to protect a value of the community where that, where that value is most in need of the district's protection in that moment. So that's where the guardrails come from. Guardrails are not smart. So if you look up at your guardrails right now, you will see they are definitely not smart. They are not specific and measurable or anything like that, but they are framed a certain way. Well, how are they framed?
As a directive to the superintendent.
They are framed exactly the opposite as a directive to the superintendent, I would say.
Sorry, wait, did you ask about guardrails?
Guardrails, guardrails. I mean, they are, I can see what you mean, but in the way we usually coach about, how, but give me more um, grammatically, how are they framed? That's what I was asking.
Um.
Are they what the superintendent shall do or shall not do?
Shall not.
Yeah, shall not do. And then I I see what you mean. That's definitely can be a directive, like, don't do this, for sure. Uh, but in saying, don't do this, or this won't fly in Long Beach, don't, don't try and do that here, cuz our values will not allow that. What does that create for the superintendent?
I will use the term, let's call it uh, rules for engagement, maybe? It it just really gives you some of the framework that you can work within in regards to executing the job.
Yeah, who would you rather work for? The boss that tells you you must do the job exactly like this, no matter what? Or the boss who says, you can get the job done however you need to, you just can't do this one thing? Who would you rather work for?
I think it will be more advantageous for the business that has uh, the freedom of creativity for the leadership while also putting in uh, boundaries in which they can operate. As uh, not every person is built the the same, not every city's built the same, not every day will be the same. And so to give a little bit of that freedom while also making sure that you have values that are representative of the community are important in regards to uh, the execution of uh, strong board goals.
Yeah, we've generally found that most human beings like freedom and agency and creativity. And we are at our best when we are able to work in those sorts of conditions, but absolutely within the bounds and the limits of the values of that community or that organization. And so the guardrails are framed as a negative in order to maximize freedom and creativity. That's actually why, it's actually the same reason why the Bill of Rights is framed, most of them, as a negative. Like Congress can't do this, 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 and this. But other than that, Congress can make laws about all sorts of stuff.
Well, I also think as a part of that, that values aren't specific to one action. They are threaded through all decisions, uh, actions, right? In in this case, if we're uplifting the values around as our guardrails reflect, community engagement, um, the stakeholders are called out, right? What do we mean by making sure that you engage with students in our communities before making major decisions? Uh, equity, although some may use it as an abstract thing, equity is anchored in um, budgets, right? Policies. So in order to be equitable and inclusion, it has to be reflected across. It's just not one thing that we're gonna be uh, equity anchored around. So I think, uh, to me, the 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 values piece um, threads across all the things that are necessary to make these, as as Mr. Miller pointed out, uh, versus calling out specific actions that we want you to do this this way. No, 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 no. Everything that you do uh, right, um, has to keep these guardrails in mind.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of the issues that come before a board are values issues and and where guardrails can be helpful when the board has put the right ones in place. So cat, as a board member, I encourage you, keep your radar up for issues that might be giving you information about the community's values and what needs protecting now or not and and cuz and things do shift over time, which is why you don't just listen once and you're done. You want to be out in community and have a plan for regular engagement. One um, one thing you could consider, just like above in the in the Board of Education Goals, you've listed both the student outcome and the student outcome goal. You could consider, if 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 you want, in a future version, listing the the specific value and then the guardrail that protects it. If if that would be helpful, just to keep that connection point uh, between the with the board and the community around that piece of the board work. Like, I'm just imagining like more bold words. Um, just an idea. Cuz I I can read those and I can think I know what value you're protecting. It's not like that complicated, but it, you know, when you say it, you you uh, it's it's better than, you know, people just making it up in their heads. Um, another piece of the puzzle in the framework are something we call interim guardrails. Uh, and I think the superintendent, you're also, this is also in the works. Yeah. So just to be clear, the board adopts the goals, the board adopts the guardrails, the superintendent creates the interim goals, the superintendent and staff create the interim guardrails. But you should know a few things about interim guardrails. They are smart, just like interim's goals and just like goals and just like initiatives. So they they are measurable and you can monitor them. You can monitor smart interim guardrails. It's harder to monitor the guardrails themselves. They're not written in a smart way, but you definitely will and can monitor uh, interim guardrails. Just like interim goals, the interim guardrails are also predictive of honoring the guardrail. Uh, and there might be three of them for every guardrail. Um, they do not have to be about student outcomes. They might be, but they don't have to be. Oftentimes, guardrails are about adult outputs or or outcomes. Um, cuz there's a value there that needs protecting in the district. Um, and that's perfectly reasonable. Uh, and the same idea that if the, if the uh, if the district accomplishes the, say, three interim guardrails that align with guardrail one, then the board is likely to be able to say, yeah, then we're, we are honoring that guardrail. The superintendent is honoring that guardrail because we've accomplished these interims. And just like interim uh, goals, there will be initiatives and work and inputs and investments made in in order to accomplish the interim goals. Protecting the community's values is worthy of investment. So that was, I went deeper than just inputs, outputs, outcomes, wanted to go into interim goals, guardrails, and interim guardrails. But we zipped through all that. We're like, we're doing great on time. Are there questions about, again, distinguishing between inputs, outputs, outcomes, adult outcomes, adult uh, student outcomes, excuse me, adult outcomes, student outcomes? The difference between a student outcome and a student outcome goal? And then interim goals, guardrails, and interim guardrails. That's a lot. We usually do that training in about four hours with a lot of like chart paper and partner shares and things like that. So you definitely, I told you, it was a refresher. We zipped through it, but questions?
Dr. Baker, I know they're coming, so um, sort of I'll ask, I'll ask it in a way if if you feel comfortable with it. Where might we think about or see um, on the interim guardrails, uh, either connections to or considerations of an example, but you don't have to use this one, sort of our budget engagement process, or like for that first interim uh, or I'm sorry, for the first guardrail, it's around allocation of funds, alright, and what considerations? Um, and we 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 do have an an ongoing budget engagement process as an example. Where where may we think about or see sort of the the interim guardrails appear?
Yeah, I think a number of things from the strategic plan will come into guardrails and thinking about how we are um, how we are operationalizing our work in service to the board goals like community engagement and how that shows up specifically in in interims, yeah. We're actually excited about interim guardrails. Um, it makes public for staff thinking about like, how do we actually do the work that maintains your values, the community's values that doesn't as often come into the boardroom, so to speak? And it just brings forward um, an opportunity to make very transparent how guardrails are operationalized and how our work reflects that.
Yeah, and I'll I'll just share, in my experience coaching, that's a very common experience in boards and and the relationship between staff and soup, and soup and board, and board and community and and everybody is that there's a lot of stuff that the guardrails and the interim guardrails can give. there's a lot of stuff that the guardrails and the interim guardrails can give. You have a space to have the conversations and to talk about it. In a, in a way that's like on a monitoring calendar, you know, like you can have discussion, you can have two-way engagement, not just one-way public comment, you can have two-way conversation when it's on agenda, if you need to.
Something that I appreciate too, just going back to this being a journey and a learning journey, is each of the steps that we're taking, including today, this will, this will increase our precision about what we're working on as it does for the board on what you're working on. So there's a simultaneous learning exchange that we've actually seen two times already in Eric and Diana representing on the implementation timeline team, where we've seen governance and staff's response and support to that coming into one space. And so we're, it's exciting, it also helps us to get more precise and focused. A few of the things related to, to goals and guardrails that we're working on, so we're working on interim guardrails and we're at a stage of contemplating, not contemplating, actually, we're at a stage of determining that the goals that the board has set will be the goals. And rather than having a set of district goals that existed for different reasons. They existed to focus a system at a time that we needed focus. And while the board was still in progress to making its board goals and making them public, and then there was a period of time of overlap, and we were testing out, are these interim goals to the board's goals? And we're, we have gotten much clearer because of what you've done and because of guidance from Greg, because our staff's been at training. And so it's all happening simultaneously, getting clearer and more aligned and going deeper and fewer, which was part of the guidance around why a board has three to five goals and not 20 goals, even when it wants to, just like we often want to. But we know that fewer and deeper is a recipe for success for our students, and that's the methodology that we're trying to use as well.
Yeah, and, and you know, your board's adopted four goals and three guardrails. You can do the quick math, you know, you're going to have 21 interims. That's a lot to, a lot to monitor, right? So you still, you got a lot of metrics and stuff that you've got your, your hands in a lot of cookie jars, and totally appropriate. And there's also additional work that your superintendent will need to keep you up to date with that is none of those interims, because you're legally required to accomplish them. And so you'll get that information as well, so there's, there's definitely a lot. And then if there's 21 interims, you can imagine all the initiatives that there will be to accomplish them all. So it's, it's, it's a big amount of work. So even when you focus, it's, it's still a huge, huge amount. We, there are districts that just have one goal, just so you know. It can be done, it's fine. So we're gonna, we're gonna use that as this, this is actually a good way to transition to this notion of boardwork versus superintendent work. So what, what do you all remember, anybody? And yes, take a hint from the bold words in the manual, there's a glossary if you want. What do you all remember, maybe some we haven't heard from yet? That's the teacher in me. That, who, what do you remember about boardwork or superintendent work?
Well, if we go back to your metaphor of the Uber Lyft driver, it's the board, the board giving the destination and the superintendent coming up with the roadmap or the way of getting there.
Yeah, so the, the board's work definitely is the work of the vision of the community as translated into the goals. Absolutely, that is boardwork. Superintendent work would be the interims, like how are we going to get there? Absolutely. What else, what else do we remember about? Oh, let me, actually, since you brought it back up, the completion of the, the rideshare anecdote that AJ shares is that he'll share a part that, you know, he's trying to get to the airport. And he happens to know that, you know, one of the routes just is closed down, there was a big accident. He just knows, driver, you can get me to the airport however you need to get, get me there. Just you cannot take this route. If your app thing thinks you can go that way, you can't. Like I just heard on the radio, there's a big accident, it might not be on your app yet. Like, you may not take me that one route, okay? So he gave a guardrail, what value was he trying to protect in that moment? Maybe his safety? Time? Yeah, those, those are, those are the values. And so he, and a good guardrail, if the, if the driver has, you know, 10 ways of getting to the airport, a guardrail might take away two or three. Still leaving lots of options for that freedom and opportunity to solve the problem and have creativity to, to get there. But then once, once he gives the guardrail and he gives the destination, he gives the vision and the guardrail, he's in the back, he's, like I said, he's not driving the car, he's, he's not telling the driver, turn left, turn right. The driver is going to figure it out, the driver's the one who's been out there driving the roads and knows the other options and knows the way to go. So that's the kind of completion of the, the rideshare story for goals and guardrails. So we talked about, so definitely boardwork is the work of the vision and translated into the goals. That is absolutely boardwork. What else is boardwork?
I would say as representatives who are also over the fiscal responsibility of the district for us to provide a second set of eyes and oversight of the distribution of resources.
Yeah, you're in California, and California, I believe, I'm a proud resident of the state of California, requires you all to approve the budget, is that correct? Yeah, so absolutely, when, in the wisdom of state legislatures, they have bestowed upon you certain duties and responsibilities, and they've put it in legislation and it's become the law, and your council will make sure, I'm sure that you do it. Our coaching is, follow the law. So absolutely, if it's legally required of the board that the board must do it, the board, can the board delegate the approval of the budget to the superintendent? No, the board cannot delegate that, you must retain that through statute. So our coaching is absolutely, you gotta do that work, that's boardwork. So we've got, the board's work is, is the vision as translated into the goals. The board's work is everything, not just the budget, everything that is legally required of the board. And there's a third thing.
Would that be listening to our communities? Because we're the liaison between the district and the constituents or communities.
Absolutely, the board's job is to, absolutely, you have to listen to the community. You are the community's representatives. It's the community's vision and values. And how can you know it if you're not listening to the community? So definitely, that is part of your work, boardwork, listening to the community, to listen for the vision and listen for the values. So we define boardwork, and that's what's on page eight in the glossary, if you like reading the definitions. But it's basically as simple as the work of the vision and the goals, the work of the values and the guardrails, number two. And number three, anything else that is legally required of the board. So that is what we define as boardwork. That is what we define as boardwork. Now, that includes the interims, that includes, you know, for both the goals and the guardrails, all that monitoring. That includes listening to the community, so you can even set the vision and the values. It includes lots of things, it includes training in the governance model, any legally required trainings of board members. There's all sorts of legally required policies, I'm sure, in California you are responsible for. So there's all sorts of stuff that falls into there. If it's not board, let me just say this, so most people think of, in our coaching, boardwork as three things. Another way of thinking about boardwork is, if you like, just two things. We would say boardwork is the work that the board has no say on, that it has to do. That's the legally required stuff. That's one side of the equation. And the other side of boardwork is the work that the board has chosen for itself. The board has chosen what the goals and the guardrails are. So if you like just a dichotomy, you could think about it that way. But you can also think about the three ways. So that's boardwork. If it's not those three things, whose work is it? It's the superintendent's work, does the work still have to get done? Is it still important? Does it still make a difference for children and adults in Long Beach? Yeah, is it boardwork? No. Can the board know about it? Yeah, definitely. Can the board have questions about it? Absolutely, absolutely. But it's not boardwork. And, and so that gets us into, that, that's basically it on like boardwork versus superintendent work. But it, but what it leads, that conversation leads into two things, both an agenda review, which I know you've gone through before, we're just going to practice it again. And also time use, because our coaching is that board meetings are for boardwork. You all exist as a board only in your board authorized public meetings. You're board members all the time, but you're only a board in board meetings. You can only do boardwork when you're together in a meeting. And so we, our coaching is, don't do superintendent work ever, and certainly don't do it in a board meeting. Use the board meeting for boardwork. You got a lot to do. And then our coaching is amongst the three things that are boardwork, try and spend 50% or more of it on the goal side of it. That doesn't mean don't do the other, you know, you've got another 50% of your minutes and time to think about the other aspects of boardwork. But that's where the, that's how we mesh all these things together. Yeah, go ahead.
Greg, I would just lift up, they're implicitly embedded in those three things or two, depending on how we think about them. But I think they're important to, to lift up. The board also evaluates the superintendent.
Oh, yeah.
All right, as part of our boardwork. And again, I know it's implicit in those areas, but I think it needs to be lifted up in relation to what we're evaluating the superintendent on, right? That, that if we're arbitrarily just deciding, we're going to evaluate the superintendent on all these things that we either have not developed as goals and/or they're not part of our priorities as a board, then really are we effectively evaluating someone on what we've tasked them? What community's vision and values are? And the second piece, again, implicitly embedded, is there are policies that we're not required by law to do, but that we have decided, these, these get us to where we want to go, that I would also say is part of the boardwork, right? And, and, and your framing, we're probably, you know, or using your framing, we're probably doing a lot more policies than what we should effectively or could effectively be doing, but there's a combination of things that were required to do. In addition to policies that we've decided we want to do because they get us this improvement on student outcomes.
Yeah, and you, board, we, whenever we come in and work with boards, everyone already has their culture around these things, their traditions, their habits around these things. So particularly when it comes to policymaking, I mean, we, your goals in our lingo, your goals are policy. Your guardrails are policy. Your operating procedures, how you communicate and relate to one another and to the community, those are your operating procedures. Those are policy. And your relationship between you and the superintendent, that's policy. Your contract with your superintendent, what you'll delegate to, to them, that kind of thing is policy. That's where we want the board making policy. We have a fifth bucket, we usually call it the legacy bucket of policy, which is all the policies that are required by statute. And those, we just encourage boards to, those are generally things that, that staff develop and staff really are expert around, and it's just generally not boardwork. I mean, it could be that some states have board required policy that you must adopt goals. You, you know, and student outcome goals, that exists in certain states. That's not, I guess maybe in your LCAP, you could describe that as policy. That that's a, certainly a state required policy, and you have to have some student outcome goals in your LCAP. They don't have to be smart, though, the way this framework describes it. So yeah, so we have a whole process, it's much further down the road in our coaching engagements with districts, and it's further down the road in the timeline. We call it a policy diet, where we help ultimately district, or boards review every single policy. We generally recommend you start with bylaws, because that's the ones how you even relate to one another. But ultimately, every policy, but some of those reviews are very simple, because you're like, this is not boardwork, so, but it's required by law, so we have to approve it, but it's really superintendent work. And so superintendent develops those things with council and staff. Usually, there can be some Q and A, and that's perfectly, perfectly fine. We just want, when you have a framework for it, you'll know, how much time do I want to put into this? A lot of times as well, policy is a big part of protecting the values. And so what boards have to be careful on is, is this, are we just kind of, is this a value in the moment? Or is this actually a durable value in need of protection such that we should actually have a guardrail around it? And so I know, you know, you're wrestling with some policy right now that's pretty values laden, which is, you know, important work for the, for the district to do. So I wouldn't, you know, I would not pause any of that, do what you need to do. But you can start to think, what would it look like for us to actually have this be enshrined as a, does it need to be a guardrail? Or do, does one of our guardrails or interim guardrails already speak to what this policy is trying, you know? I don't know. But that's the sort of coaching we would offer, just to get you thinking in those ways. There was more that you mentioned that I wanted to bring up, but so we were, we're talking about boardwork versus superintendent work. Oh, you, you were saying implicit, that it's implicitly in the framework. I want to go a little further, I believe it is explicitly in the framework, some of the ideas you're talking about. Could you read on page four, the last clause under approaching student outcome focus around superintendent evaluation?
Yeah, and, and Greg, just to clarify, I, I was saying what you shared, not, not.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What you shared implicitly, so, page four, what do you want me to read?
The bottom on approaching student outcome focus, the superintendent.
Superintendent is evaluated only on performance regarding board goals, guardrails, and interim goals, guardrails. A board considers superintendent performance to be indistinguishable from school system performance.
Yeah, so I just want to share, like, whether or not that is true in Long Beach or not, in this moment, that is definitely our coaching. Our coaching is that there's no such thing as, boy, this superintendent is amazing at their job and the kids can't read. They're going down. You know, they're not making progress. Like, that just doesn't exist, or neither does the opposite. We cannot stand the superintendent, boy, are they awful, but they're honoring the goal, they're accomplishing the goals and they're honoring the guardrails. Like, we just don't think that that is a good way to evaluate the performance. So we, we, we consider those things synonymous. So just putting that out there, we would encourage you to do that. And in fact, it's so critical, it's not a mastering student outcomes focused component. It's early in the framework, right? Meaning, because you can't, you can't even get those first 10 points in that column without doing it, because it's so kind of foundational to the mindsets behind some of the framework. So this is still for the board to consider, if this is really what you want to do. You, you can improve your effectiveness on behalf of students without accomplishing that clause. That would be crystal clear, you can, you can make improvements. But we think you'll be leaving points on the, literal, points on the board here, but points on the board for students if you, if you aren't willing to commit to that. So that's something, you're not going to decide that tonight or figure that out, but it's definitely something for you guys to be thinking about. And then the other thing you mentioned around, you know, you said absolutely, it's the board's job to evaluate the superintendent. So on page 22, and we're going to shift now, and we're going to start to look at, so we've been talking about boardwork versus superintendent work. So on page 22 is a printed out copy of how we track time in board meetings. And so if everyone, it's a little bit, so I just actually wanted to give folks like two minutes on page 22. It's, it says board monthly time use evaluation. If folks could just take a minute, a couple of minutes, just read that. If folks could just take a minute, a couple of minutes, just read that. Okay. I'm going to bring you back together. So we track time, if you, that first column, vision and goals, values and guardrails, that, that connects to the colored pages on the framework and then each one is broken down. Pop quiz, the cell, and it's not like in Excel where you can give me, uh, the row and column headers, but which cells or boxes are the minutes that count towards the 50% focused on student outcomes? Goal monitoring absolutely counts towards those 50, to the numerator in the 50% fraction. Yep. Anything else count? I know people don't like to be wrong. Anyone want to just take a guess? There's one more. Good, good guess. Nope.
If we get it wrong, is there an opportunity for extra credit?
Nope. Goal setting, goal setting. All the work boards spend together deliberating, should we have this goal? Should we have that goal? And looking at the student, uh, the student analysis data and the community listening summary. So goal setting, which is not regularly done. It's kind of a moment in time experience. So most of your student outcome focused minutes, the 50%, the numerator, uh, is just the goal monitoring. All the other items here, other, other than other, uh, are, are still board work and important work to do. I mean, you got, you have to accomplish a lot of the other things, but they are not in your numerator. Just want to be crystal clear. And so this, this tool, uh, and we have a digital version where you can like, you know, type in notes and stuff like that. Uh, it is definitely our coaching that we, we love it when board members, an individual takes it upon themselves or, and with some extra training and some help, says, I'll track time for the quarter. And so like one of you just choosing to start tracking time today. I mean, the, where, where is today's two hours, this two hours? Which box does today go? Yeah. Board training, training for a board on student outcomes focused governance and related topics. So this, these minutes are down there. There's, this is definitely board work. This, this doesn't actually count as towards your numerator. You're 50%. That's okay. It's okay. But it would be great to have a volunteer board member track time to, today in April, in May and in June. So that in July, when you get to the part on the July self-evaluation on page four, you can know, did the board spend 10%, 25% or 50% of the time monitoring? The only way you can answer the question in the self-evaluation is if you are tracking time all throughout. So tonight, when we do the self-evaluation, we'll see what happens. I have a surprise for you, by the way. About, I, I tracked your time in March at least. So, well, we'll, you'll can hear that later. But is there anyone already willing to, uh, to track time for April, May and June? You can use the recordings. You don't have to do anything special tonight. Does anyone want to? Volunteer? Hmm. We usually, I recommend, I mean, it could be staff, but it's better when board members step up and do their jobs.
No one else wants to do it? I'd, I'd rather do it than have staff, uh, do it.
Thank you. And I'm asking you to do it for one quarter and then we were,
So between now and, now and, uh,
April, May and June.
Okay.
And, and you'll, and I'll, and I'd love to connect with you 20 minutes, you know, next week or two. And then, uh, you'll be able to bring the data to the meeting in July. I said, do you guys meet in July? Yeah. Cause we'll do the quarterly evaluation in July as well.
Greg?
Yep.
So if I'm going to do this,
Yeah.
and I'll take you up on the offer to,
I'll help you do it. Don't worry.
So in my mind, there are two possibilities on, um, whether we increase our time devoted to student outcomes, right? Not mutually exclusive of each other. We could either add more stuff that we put in the monitoring, a piece. I'm assuming we're not going to go back and do goal setting at this point. Not right now, right?
That would not be the coaching.
Right. And/or we reduce time on other stuff that we're doing. And again, they're not mutually exclusive of each other. Are we going to have a conversation? Uh, because if I'm going to agree to, to, to track this around if we are going to reduce stuff, where does that go? And then what space and how? And when does that happen if it's not going to happen in our, uh, agendas?
So I, I would love to have that conversation. We can talk a little bit about it now. What I would say though, is for this quarter, this up, this current now April, May, June quarter, just collect the data. I just collect the data to just see where you're at. It doesn't matter and it's fine if you're at 0%, 10%, 15%. Just, just start building the capacity of the board to pay attention to how it is using its time. Okay? But to that question about, yeah, can, do you increase the numerator or shrink the denominator? Cause either way we'll increase a percentage. You probably end up doing a little bit of both. Um, the, the monitoring calendar maybe needs to be adjusted. Maybe it doesn't. You'll find that out. The other thing that happens that we talked before, does the board still need to know a lot about superintendent work? Yeah. The question is, does the board have to find out about superintendent work at a board meeting? And there are great reasons for there to be superintendent work, you know, shared at a board meeting. You're all in the same place at the same time. Superintendent doesn't have to rely on you to do your homework. Right? They just make sure you get the information in a meeting. The public has been trained for generations to get information from the district through the board agendas and the transparency that the board agendas create because of our open meeting laws. Right? So none of this is about taking away information from the public, far from it. Anything, if you ever want to shrink the denominator, like take things off, don't, don't let that mean you're, you're losing transparency with the public. You just start to avail yourselves of maybe other ways of being transparent with the public. Whether that's superintendent meetings that are not board meetings because the superintendent has things that they need to share with the public. Or not just the board docs website, you know, with the board materials, but there's also like superintendent public work materials that are discussed. And maybe you continue to put a bunch of superintendent work on your agenda that's just not discussed as part of the agenda because you just know the, the community acts, that's the way that works for the community to get information. I, I don't have, I'm just throwing stuff out. I'm not saying what's the right way to do it. I do know that boards, you use a consent agenda. Some boards also use an information consent agenda. I don't know if you guys, the, so the consent agenda are things the board has to take action on. But there's oftentimes things where you just kind of want to be on record in receipt of. Like we all want to make this public to the community. We want to make this public to the board. The board wants to make it public to the soup. Everyone, we just want everyone on the same page. And we want to take, and we even will take an action just to, just simply saying and acknowledging the board is in receipt of all of this information. You know, and that, that is another tool. I worked with a district where the staff took it upon themselves, I mean, staff, this is just an idea. Instead of a live presentation, you know, there is the slides. Staff in their own office, get as many recording opportunities as they want. They can mess up. They can edit the recording. They can take another crack at it. They can try it again. And then the recording just is shared to the board. Maybe it's part of a Friday email or up on a website. It goes, it can go to the public. So there are other, part of what this is just trying to get you to think about is that there are other tools. Your board meetings are important and they are a tool for sure, but you have other ones as well. And I would now, just to be clear, like monitoring, that's live and in prime time and the lights are on because that's the main thing. Yeah.
I, I have something to, um, to add. Since we're talking about how much time we spend in the board meetings. We are fortunate that we have a very involved community. We have, um, a, a portion of our meetings that are dedicated to public comment. But we give three minutes for public comment. And, uh, one of the, um, one of the reasons our, our last board meeting went very long is because we had so many people who, who came to share. And I'm wondering, do you know what other, um, large school districts or large, yeah, districts do in their board meetings? Do they give three minutes? Do they give two minutes? If, if there's a way of maybe changing those parameters, we can maybe, um, regularly, uh, allow more people to speak in the timeframe that, that we've dedicated for public comment.
So let's, let's, let's stay on public comment for a few minutes because there's a lot there to unpack. And I appreciate the question for sure. So first off, follow the law. Like that is definitely the coaching. So I saw, I witnessed it last month. There was a person who, um, needed translation and they got double the time. Like that's the law of California. You accommodated that. Definitely the way to go. California does not require like a certain amount of time you make available on either one. And counsel, please hop in here. You know this stuff better than I do. Our coaching is that you make enough time available that is basically the norm of the broader region. So you might do a little research on your, yourself and your neighbor districts and peers down here in Southern California and like what, what's kind of reasonable. And what I mean by that is when we track time and the deno, this gets to the next idea on the denominator. Closed session minutes and statutorily required public comment minutes do not count in our denominator. Okay? So in California, you know, if you all say, we're going to do 45 minutes, I'm making this up, 45 minutes every meeting, up to 45 minutes on agenda items and up to 45 minutes on non-agenda items. Like if that's what you just discover in your research is a reasonable limit that you want to hold, that's fine. We would say, then that hour and a half does not count to your denominator. And then if you decided to vote to extend that time, for whatever reason, we would say that difference, that delta, that's where you're making a choice beyond like what statute and the norm requires of you. Where that would, we're not saying don't do it. We're just saying that those, that delta would, would, uh, be in your denominator around student outcome focus minutes.
And it also would affect the efficiency of the meeting. If we're, if we're going over that, um, dedicated amount of time, it goes to the efficiency of a meeting. So, um, we, we dedicate 30 minute, a, a 30 minute time limit for items on the agenda, 30 minutes for items not listed on the agenda. When we, um, vote to extend, and it, it's happened where we end up dedicating an hour to items listed on the agenda and another hour for items not listed on the agenda. So that affects the overall efficiency of the meeting because if we're trying to get to a point where we have a two hour meeting for efficiency and we're dedicating two hours for public comment, that's,
Well, just keep two hours exclusive of closed session and, and statutorily required public comment. So that's what we mean by a two hour public meeting. So your, your actual meeting could, could go longer, but we're, when we in the frame, when you see that in the framework around no meeting lasts longer than two hours, we're talking about the minutes that you truly, that you really control. Yeah. And, and I also want to go further that, um, take lots of public comment as a signal that your community wants to engage with you. And engage with them. Board meetings tend to be, uh, not great places for two-way engagement with the community. There are other options. So I would, I, before I would go hard on like limiting public comments too much, I would try and, I would first go do the work of trying, going out to community and hosting additional engagements to try and understand what else is going on and that might change what happens at a board meeting. The other thing is, and districts do all sorts of things. I don't actually know what the practices of Long Beach. But around the country, uh, there are time periods where some districts have, um, written public comments on every agenda item and their, their kind of board doc system allows people to type in a comment on, um, agenda items and non-agenda items. And then those are part of the record and that can reduce, um, and board members are expected to, you know, read them. Like I think that usually that feature, um, gets like turned off, you know, 24 hours before the meeting because board members are expected to have read them all or take a few minutes in public, you know, in the meeting to, to make sure you've read them. There are boards that have an 800 number where people can leave voicemails. So you can also increase the, um, options people have for giving voice and public comment. If you're interested in helping people be fully heard without impacting the minutes in a board meeting. So the coaching would not be, you know, limit the ability for the public to speak. Like you want to hear from the community as much as possible. The question is, is why is it always happening in the board? You know, is that really the best place for it? So you can actually engage.
And, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting we limit public comment because I feel that it's, um, you know, it, it's so important to hear from our communities. We, um, changes are made from the, uh, the information they come forward with.
Yeah.
So I, I absolutely value hearing from the community. I'm just wondering if there's a more efficient way of going about it. I mean, um, I, I am curious to know what our, our neighboring districts allow for, um, for public comment, but I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, two minutes might be just as effective as three minutes. That we'd still get to hear from as many people who wanted to speak. They would just have to be more concise.
Yeah. Different boards definitely do it differently. Some boards, uh, have a 30 minute time designation and they count up how many people and then the, the chair says, okay, since there's that many people, you can all have four minutes. You know, or this, some people say, oh, no, there's so many people, you all have one minute, you know, so, but always honoring the translation requirement. So it just, it just varies. Uh, so it sounds like you're interested in doing some homework and go, go learn from what some other districts are in terms of region, the kind of regional norms. Um, and you could explore other ways of, of connecting with, with the public. But this also gets into this notion of customer service versus owner, owner service. But, um, Director Benitez, did you want to say something?
Yeah. I, I, I would just say that because we're not taking action on the minutes piece, uh, today specifically, I would ask, uh, President Craighead and my colleagues that, um, if we are going to have a conversation around, uh, public comment, that we agendize that conversation because I, I, I think in addition to, um, the additional ways that Greg said that there's other options, I think we should ask our community to weigh in on anything that we're deciding that's directly impacting them. Historically speaking, um, real or perceived, there, there has been a sense, and I'm sure that Long Beach isn't the only district, that public comment at, uh, an agendized meeting is seen as the only way
Right.
uh, to speak to the board. So again, if we're going to have in future conversations, uh, other spaces where we're able to listen, uh, where we're able to engage with our communities, uh, then at that point, I think it's fair to start thinking about public comment and what have you. But if historically, and as is the case still today, it is the only, or one of the only places for us to hear directly from our communities, I'm hesitant to,
Absolutely.
to have a conversation about, uh, anything to do with how we're thinking about whether it's individual minutes or overall time. Uh, I think it's also important for us to, you know, take those considerations into, what we consider to be items that are student outcomes focused for our agendas. That's why I was asking the, my, my initial question is, hey, if I'm going to track time here, at some point we have, I have to, have to have conversations that, um, if best practices is keep your meetings within two hours, but we're not counting public comment, quote unquote, as part of those two hours. And we don't want to have eight meetings a month, uh, as well, then we really have to be intentional. This is more to my colleagues around, then what other opportunities and spaces will we provide our communities? So that there isn't this feeling that, wait a minute, we're, we only get you once or twice a month and then you're going to cut our time, uh, to, to do that? So again, that's sort of my feeling. Since we're not taking action on it today,
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with just, I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, definitely. And as I said, I would focus on increasing your engagements with the community just outside of board meeting. That would be my first step for sure. I would not try and, if you really want to change public con, if, if the, the rules of engagement around public comment, I agree, you need to take public comment on it using the current system. I agree, you need to take public comment on it using the current system. Um, and you need to agendize it, of course, and all that stuff. And, uh, and, yeah, it, it, if the, if your community understands this to be a powerful, important tool, I would mess with it very carefully and give them lots, prove that they have other options before you just say they have other options, right? Yeah.
Greg, pass it. Oh, please. I was just gonna say that I know that there's been a lot of work done by the National Civic League on meetings and how poorly they tap into public sentiment about things. And, uh, I, I think we can look at that, there's a whole literature out there about other ways to do things and we could, uh, I, I, I agree, I think everybody agrees that the best thing to do is to get as much public comment as possible and to make it as high quality as possible. And there are different ways that make both of those things happen.
Yeah.
Just real quick, um, we can probably get to this later, but as it relates to tracking minutes and as Dr. Benitez is getting ready to do so, um, something that has been kind of a bit of confusion as we went to the cohort training in Baltimore. I think we collectively really value voices from the field, as we call it. Folks coming, either coming to us or us going to them to kind of specifically related to the board goals themselves. So later this evening, we're gonna talk with the board about an opportunity to go out to listen to students in May at a May nineteenth board meeting specifically related to their experiences for, around board goals three and four. And then we'll come back that evening and in the board meeting, have a discussion about the data, the qualitative data that we collected from students as it relates to board goals three and four. I'm just curious, because I've heard kind of different opinions, if that conversation with the board that evening, having gathered that qualitative data related to the board goals, is that a goal monitoring conversation?
Which box do we put it in?
Or is it something else?
So, and I know you're talking about this plan later tonight, but if it happens, when you're out at the school, is it gonna be a meeting of the board?
Have a, I'm gonna try to, so...
Is a quorum of the board gonna be there?
They will not necessarily be at the same location. They will all be, we will all be out in schools.
Yeah.
They will not necessarily, it will not necessarily be an agendized, well, actually, I don't know how we'd answer that.
In the past, we haven't done a workshop where they're either in different places or visiting a school. There's, it's more informational and it's been considered a site visit with the board, but not a public meeting.
Not an agendized public meeting.
Right.
So, so the technical answer is, if it's not a public meeting, then we're not tracking the minutes here. And is it a great use of board members' time? Absolutely.
I'm referring more to that evening, we'll come back. And in the agendized board meeting, we will engage in a discussion about what we all heard when we were out at sites earlier that day.
Is it aligned to the, what you're supposed to be monitoring that night?
It will be aligned, will be aligned to board goals three and four.
Is board, and are board goals three and four on what are supposed to be monitored in May?
Yes.
Yes.
Then it goes in goal monitoring.
Yep.
Greg, can I...
If we decide to do it.
Yeah, yeah. This is all hypothetical. I don't know what, y'all will discuss this later tonight. Yeah.
Under that same, uh, notion around tracking the minutes and thinking about that task of, "How do I make sure that this falls in the right category?" There's a dissonance across these categories as some being essential for others. So like, the board goals were created with guardrails, but the guardrails don't count towards the goals. The community can give input around the vision and values which relates to the goals and guardrails, but does not count towards the goals and guardsrails. So can you clarify sort of the distinction in helping Dr. Benitez track this around really, is this agendized item counting towards what it needs to monitor versus that which is auxiliary or supplemental, but essential to tracking the goals?
Yeah, because it's definitely, it's definitely, everything you just described is definitely board work and we want to track all the minutes. So definitely count the minutes spent on all the things that you just described. Then at the end, after we have it all, we can figure out, well, which ones are, they're all in the denominator, we know that. But just which ones are in the numerator is the question. And it's just, it's just like, uh, the research that kind of is behind the framework is just clear that the minutes actually setting the goals and monitoring the goals are though that, when boards have that at fifty percent or higher, that's what's making it more effective on actually making improvements on those goals. That's what's actually creating the culture and driving down through the cabinet, down to principals and teachers to actually improve student outcomes. It's not that the other work isn't important and doesn't have to get done and it still gets tracked. Uh, it's just what happens to be what the research revealed. So, um, but the other way to answer your question is to look at an agenda, which we could do tonight, uh, or we could use tonight's agenda, um, as a, as a, just to go through it real quick as an exercise. I'm just looking at time, about twenty-five minutes. Um, I did want to also talk about this notion of, it came up, um, in the conversation of public comment about, uh, ownership service versus customer service because it kind of parallels board work versus superintendent work. And so, public comment is frequently, um, and board email, emails to the board and things like that are frequently ways for boards to get information about issues needing addressing. And that's the nature of the game. You're gonna have issues that need addressing. Our coaching is that when board members are faced with issues, whether it's over email or at a public comment, is that you try and quickly as possible discern in your head, is this an ownership issue? Is this about the vision and the values of the community? Or is this a customer issue? And does this person need customer service of the district? And the goal is for the person to get the service that they need. The goal is to help them get their issue addressed, whatever it may be. They might not get exactly what they want, that's not our coaching. But our coaching is that they should get addressed what they need addressed. And the idea is that they will get what they need addressed most quickly if they're directed to the right place as quickly as possible. There's just, there are, there are customer service issues that boards you have no idea about. You know, and like, even principals would tell a family like, "Have you talked first with the teacher?" You know, that, that's a very common thing. You just want the issue addressed by the person who's most likely able to address it. Um, and so that's where this distinction comes from. So, um, we talk about, you know, students have, the same human can wear both hats of a customer and an owner. Okay? So I go and I eat at my favorite fast casual restaurant, uh, and I buy some food. Am I an owner of the restaurant or a customer of the restaurant? Customer. I love the food so much, I go home, I get on whatever it is, Robin Hood, crypto, E-Trade, and I buy a couple shares in the company. Is that, am I engaging, when I buy then, am I engaging in ownership behavior or customer behavior? Yeah, ownership. I'm buying, I'm buying into the company. I'm owning the company. The next day, I have my shares, digital shares. I go back in to the restaurant, I love this place, and I buy, uh, you know, another sandwich. Am I engaging in customer behavior or ownership behavior? I'm engaging in customer behavior, even though I am an owner. And you have, you have, uh, students. Your students live, I bet, almost every one of them, you might have a few that don't, but I bet your students live in, uh, your, in the boundaries of your school district. Some of them are eighteen. Some of them are not eighteen, but they still pay taxes. Some, and some of them vote. I don't know if you have the rule, in Oakland, our sixteen-year-olds can vote for school board. I don't know how y'all do it here in Long Beach, but, yeah. But just so you know, like, when, when our young people are voting, are they engaging as customers of the school district or owners of the school district? When they're voting. They're voting, they're engaging as owners of the school district.
Sorry, Greg, I had my mic off.
When they're going to calculus class and turning in homework and getting a grade back, are they engaging as customers of the school district or owners of the school district? They're definitely customers. Yeah. The teacher, when you, when you pay your teacher for a job well done, a hard day's worth of work, is that a customer transaction or an ownership transaction? It's a customer transaction. When your teachers who live and vote in your community engage around the vision of what they want to be true for their students, are they engaging those teachers as owners of the, in the community or customers in the community? Owners. Right? So the same human can, can behave in both ways. And so it's important to understand what's the issue at hand so that you can direct them so they can get the help they need. If they're, if they are engaging with you about something that is about the student outcome goals or about the values of Long Beach, then that's definitely ownership behavior. And that is board work to listen and hear that and contemplate, "Am I hearing from the representative sample of the community? Is it just one loud voice?" You know, that's for the, only the board can figure that out. You know, is this a value that truly needs protecting on behalf of the whole community? Or is this just, are we holding the line here that we can't just have a guardrail about everything? Because if we have a guardrail about everything, nothing will get done and we have to hold a line somewhere.
Greg, there's often, um, the scenario where my experience has been either something is not working or not working well for a community member, and to use your fast food example, um, to not get the product that they paid for and, um, then reach out to the CEO of the entire, uh, thing. Um, and, and so again, the scenario is that, that's not necessarily a wrong or bad thing. Um, but it could be because they went through that restaurant already and the assistant manager didn't address it and the manager didn't address it and the regional manager didn't address it. And it gets to that, that means something's not working right along the way that then we then have to make determination, okay, who does this go to if it's coming to me? But it also could be that the, they were not aware or something in the system is not working where maybe they couldn't get ahold of the assistant manager or the manager or got a runaround and they're also coming, uh, to, to...
Let's play with...
Yeah, yeah.
They never even made the attempt. Or that, yeah, or they made the attempt, they just disagree. So, whenever, if the issue that they're trying to resolve, "My food was cold", that is a customer food issue, right? That's a customer issue. The CEO cannot directly solve that issue. If that's truly what the customer wants solved, the per, you know, way further down the food chain, uh, chain of command, uh, that issue needs to be resolved. And so, if the role in that, our coaching would be, the role would be to make sure that the, the person in that situation is aware of that and direct them there and check that they went there first and try and direct them there first. Now we get into the scenario where, "Yeah, I went there and I didn't like it and da-da-da-da." And so I, da-da-da-da, right? And it goes on up. That's then a question of, is this, is there a value here then? That if something's not right in our organization and we're not attending to the needs that we should be attending to? Or is this just someone with a very strong opinion about cold food and they think food is cold when the evidence points to, actually, it was served warm just like everybody else and no one else has a problem with it? And only in that point, someone has to back the staff and say, "Sorry, customer, like, this is how we do it here. This is it." There, there are limits. But you can always make the person, we would always guide and coach to help the person have the experience authentically, have the experience of being heard. Absolutely. And, and then we secondly want them to have the information, like, here's where we, yes, we understand you're having a problem and this is where you're gonna get the best service to get that resolved. If you're gonna get it resolved the way you want, this is your best chance. Go over here. So connect them. And thirdly, keep the, keep the door open. Doesn't mean you don't, you're not promising that they're gonna get it resolved the way they want it resolved. They, they might not, but they might at least get some more information and they might walk away, you know, "Okay, now I understand," you know? Doesn't mean they got what they wanted. But you can keep the conversation open. You can say, "Look, if you go down this path and you engaged where, you know, where you can get the best service, but you're still not satisfied or, or that engagement doesn't happen, then, then the next person to go to is here and then eventually come back to us." Because then you're not dealing necessarily, you might not be dealing with a customer issue. You might be dealing with a values issue, in which case you want that information. So we would say, keep the door open. That doesn't mean you have to be there when those two people are working it out at the lower level. You don't even need to know if it got resolved or not because that, you've put it on them to come back to you if it's truly a problem. Otherwise, you can assume, you know, in this case, your staff has handled the customer service issue.
Yeah, and, and again, let's go with that there actually was a problem, that it wasn't served according to standards or what have you.
Yeah.
Uh, there's, there's an important element for me around the community engagement piece that really, for me, just speaking for myself, I, I don't think the, the, the practical best solution is for me to go to that restaurant to talk to the cook about why, as a, you know, about why the food wasn't served. But me knowing, okay, who is the best person? Is it the man, the regional manager? In our case, we have a superintendent, right? That's sort of the responsibility. Because real or perceived, there still is a notion in our communities, and, and look, we're elected, right? That if we want change to happen in our system, you gotta go to the very top. Uh, right? And so, again, the values piece to me is still the anchor here that absolutely we need to hear and we need to know when things, not just when things are not working, but also about good things, right? Like, we've had ten years of great, you know, X, Y, and Z. But, but that's where I think it's important that if we're limiting our engagement, we as a board, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about this, our engagement with our communities to just public comment, then folks then are like, well, then we have to figure out another way to get this information to the board member and then it becomes a, then we have a hundred people coming to us about this if systems are not in place, these guardrails, right? Where engagement should be taking place beyond the actual board meeting.
Yeah. Your, your community uses it because this is what they've got. You, this is not, they're doing what the best they, absolutely the best they can. Our coaching would be, get, go out and engage with folks and, and make sure you're hearing them, for sure. But one-way board meetings is really not always the best way to do it. But it doesn't, it makes perfect sense why people would show up and use that. If that's the only tool they got, absolutely. I'd be right with them. Um, all right, so we talked about, uh, board work and superintendent work and customer service and ownership service. I will just say savvy superintendents and staff definitely have their ears perked up for, in, in public comment for, for customer service issues that are clearly not the work of the board. Just because they come to a board meeting, they, that is perfectly reasonable. Uh, it will take a long time for a community to learn to go another route once they even have another route avail, available to them. So don't expect community to, to be any different, you know, just because you want them to be different. That's, that's not reasonable. So, when they show up and it's public comment, uh, listen, and if it's a customer service issue, it should be followed up on. Doesn't necessarily mean it's always, maybe it's superintendent, maybe it's their designee, maybe it's their designees, designee, 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 you know, but that's what, that's what you do. Um, and if it's board work, if it's clear about board work, you can acknowledge it as such that it's board work as well. Um, it's also, and again, counsel can weigh in on this, it's, uh, it's appropriate to clarify things, you know, brief, brief clarification statements. Not like, you know, engagements, but if you know, you know, if people think, oh, you're, you're all gonna, you know, vote on the budget and it's only March, why are you voting on the budget? You know, and you have all these public comments about voting on the, you can, you're allowed to clarify, "We're, we're not voting on the budget in March." You know, you're, you're allowed to say those things, um, just to be clear. So, okay, we talked about inputs, outputs, outcomes, adult outcomes, student outcomes. We talked about, uh, the role of interims with both goals, student outcome goals and guardrails. Uh, we talked about board work versus superintendent work and customer service and, and ownership service. Uh, and we talked a little bit about time use and we got a volunteer to start tracking time. Probably for tonight, you'll use the recordings, but go ahead, do it, do what you can tonight. It might just help tonight just to literally note what time did you start and end each agenda item. And then, um, and then tonight, we're gonna do, as part of the board meeting, the self-evaluation. And, um, and so we'll talk more about that as well. The last thing we have, and we have ten minutes if you want to do it or start doing it, was to do this, to look at an agenda review, um, if you're curious. I know that the board did it a few years ago and that's how you've got to your current kind of basic agenda structure. And we could, we could do it a little bit more again if you want. It's a, it's a practice that we would recommend you go through every year or two. Or, Madam Chair, if you want, we can, we can turn, I could turn it back over if you feel like we've had enough.
Well, I'm curious to know what my colleagues think about that, but we still have closed session. And so I was thinking, um, if, if we wrapped up now, we'd have time to have a little bit of a break, allow people to get back upstairs, um, so that we can be back down here promptly at five.
Yeah.
So, is that okay with everyone?
I'm okay with that, but, um, Greg, unless I misunderstood the homework, I think part of our prep work or homework was also to go through and note whether anything on our document framework is true.
Yeah, that's for tonight.
That's for tonight.
That's for tonight.
So that, so that will still come back.
That's still coming tonight, yeah. And on the agenda, you read the agenda, um... And on the agenda, you read the agenda, what's it called, review, agenda review document. That's work that we can bring back. It's basically though, applying the board work versus superintendent work lens to an agenda. And, and when you come across things that you're like, hmm, that's superintendent work, just asking yourself, do we want to keep it on the agenda? Or is there another way that the board can have this information, the public can have this information? Everyone can have it, just not as part of the meeting, that's all. And, and sometime, in some cases, the board chair and the, the, the agenda creators will say, no, we, we just, we gotta keep it on for right now. But we want you to start being as intentional as possible.
Okay, so it sounds like we can have a little bit of a break, start closed session at four and then be back here at five o'clock. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.